Okay, if everybody would like to find their spot, we'll, we'll call the meeting to order. Clearly, I'd make a poor teacher bringing things to order. But I do have the microphone control here, so I've noted who didn't settle down when they should have. Anyway, um, call the meeting to order. Please rise and we'll sing Oh, Canada. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
You, Councilor Mackey. Councilor McKay is absent, Councilor Carlton, Councilor Pringle, Councilor McQueen, Councilor Nielsen, Councilor Patterson, Councilor Dickert, Councilor Kentner, Councilor Keveney, Councilor Body, Councilor Greg, Warden Milne, Councilor Dobreen, Councilor Mattressaw, Councilor Boarding Young. Councilor Boarding Young is the attendance, Councilor Echoes, Councilor Hutchinson. We have all members and attendants with the exception of Councilor McKay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Inishnabi Nation, the people of the three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations. We further give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogeen and the Chipewas of Nawash, known collectively as the Sogeen-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of these lands and these waters. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and are committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. Is there any declaration really of interest related to any item on this morning's agenda? Seeing none, if one should arise, you can declare it at that time. First order of business is adoption of the minutes of the county council and committee of the whole meeting dated April, or April, February 8th, wishful thinking. Someone care to move adoption of those minutes, Councilor Dobreen and Councilor Greg? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. This morning, we have delegations, uh, one delegation, we have Peter McGowan, I believe he's here somewhere. Yes, he is. Come on forward, sir. You're here to talk about the speed limit change potential at Rob Roy and the township of Gray Highlands. Welcome, sir. The floor is yours. I presume somebody showed you how to run that microphone?
Okay. Sorry, I apologize. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Gray, Gray County Warden Milne and members of Gray County Council. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning regarding a significant public safety issue stemming from significant speeding on Gray Road 31 in the vicinity of Rob Roy. Uh, my name is Peter McGowan. I'm speaking here this morning on my own behalf and on behalf of a number of my fellow residents on Gray Road 31 and in the vicinity, some of whom have joined me here in council chambers this morning. And, uh, all of us share a common and serious concern with respect to the speeding issue that I'll be speaking to in the next few minutes. Uh, as council, I suspect knows, Gray Road 31 in the vicinity of Rob Roy essentially traverses the head of the Pretty River Valley. There are high points to the east, um, on the, uh, on the east ridge of the valley head. And also there's another corresponding high point at the west ridge of the valley, uh, of the valley head. And in between, there's an area of significant topographical variation uh, with the Pretty River flowing underneath the road at the lowest point in the, in the road sag. Uh, there's an existing 700 meter long reduced speed zone running for about 700 meters east from the Rob Roy intersection. Due to very significant speeding that I'll outline briefly shortly through that 60 kilometer hour zone, uh, we as local residents are proposing an extension of the reduced speed zone. So that effectively that reduced speed zone runs from the high point on the ridge to the east to the high point on the ridge to the west. Uh, we've been working on trying to resolve this speeding issue for about two years. Uh, and throughout our period of engagement on the issue, we've been, um, placed heavy emphasis on the statement in the county's speed limit evaluation policy, which makes it clear that spreading, setting speed limits is, is not a science. That in setting speed limits, a number of issues and considerations need to be taken into account. Some of those considerations and issues involve competing interests and considerations. And as a result, throughout our involvement with this issue, we've tried to be professional in our approach, balanced, objective, analytical, but most of all, and most importantly, we've tried to be reasonable. To that end, we've prepared, and I apologize for its length, but we did prepare a fairly lengthy memorandum for you as council members, uh, which we're hoping you've had an opportunity to review. Uh, this morning, I'd like to just take the opportunity to highlight six points from that memorandum that we'd like to draw your particular attention to. The first point is that the speeding problem at Rob Roy is severe. Uh, we've, as local residents, have collected our own speed data. The OPP has collected speed data and county councils, uh, transportation, excuse me, county's transportation services department has collected speed data. And essentially what that speed data is uniformly indicating is that traffic is traveling through the reduced 60 kilometer an hour zone at an average speed of essentially 90 kilometers an hour, with approximately one third of the vehicles traveling through that zone at speeds in excess of 100 kilometers an hour. The second issue that we want to highlight is that the features and characteristics of Rob Roy, excuse me, of Gray Road 31 in the vicinity of Rob Roy serve to heighten safety-related concerns resulting from that speeding rather than reducing the concerns. Those features include some poor, excuse me, vertical alignment of the road that results in some significant visual impairment. Secondly, some very, very narrow shoulders. Thirdly, some very, very significant drop offs from the shoulders. In some cases, uh, for a height of approximately 15 to 20 feet. And then finally, some very, very narrow pinched in sections of the road resulting from some cedar posts and steel cable retaining systems that have been installed. The third point that we wanted to highlight is that the current placement of the signs delineating the boundaries of the reduced speed zone serves to exacerbate the speeding problem. Drivers encounter those signs marking out the beginning and the end of the 60 kilometer hour zone after long and extended downhill, um, stretches during which a significant head of steam has been gathered, such that the placement of those signs is not conducive to speed limit compliance. The fourth point that we want to highlight is that placing the reduced speed zone signs at the tops, uh, of the western ridge and the eastern ridge to the valley head will serve to provide drivers with the opportunity to reduce their speeds before gathering significant speed on those downhill stretches, um, that I've, that I've just referenced, the downhill stretches down the sides, the eastern side and the western side of the valley head. The fifth point that we want to highlight is that if the proposal that we've made is implemented, the effect that the, that the implementation of that proposal will have on driving time through this stretch of road will be minimal. Uh, when you do the math, uh, it turns out that reducing the speed as we're suggesting will only add slightly less than 18 seconds of travel time on the relevant stretch of road. The sixth and final point we wanted to make is that the extension of the reduced speed zone as we're requesting is a cost-effective, financially prudent, and expedient manner in which to address a significant public safety issue resulting or stemming from speeding on the road. It, it merely involves the movement, uh, of a few signs. Warden Milne and members of council, we recognize that a balanced approach needs to be taken in addressing the speed issue. In this case, the, the public interest in road safety does need to be balanced with the purpose and function of Gray Road 31 as a county road. Given the severity of the speeding problem that we as local residents are encountering, coupled with the minimal increase in driving time of, as I've said, less than 18 seconds that would result from implementing this proposal, we're confident that the proposal to extend the reduced speed zone does indeed properly balance the various uh, public interests that are at play here. So we are asking that council include this speed limit reduction proposal uh, in the pending amendments to the, uh, to the county's traffic and parking by law. I know council's busy with many things, so we wanted to be brief in our presentation this morning. Hopefully I've done that, but that concludes my remarks. We're certainly happy to take any questions from council that any member of council may have. But thank you again for the opportunity to speak to this issue this morning.
Thanks, sir. Very well done, I must say. Thank you. Uh, are there any questions? Okay, I think that, Councilor Apples. I would just, before you speak, I, I just want to make sure that, um, I don't want to get into the debate yet about the merits of, of an amendment. As I understand it, that will happen when we consider the bylaw. There will be an opportunity then to present an amendment to the bylaw as it's presented on our agenda. But if there's questions for clarification on the presentation, now's the time for that. So Councilor Echoes still wants to speak? That's what I was afraid of. So proceed.
Thank you, and, and well presented and appreciate the, uh, slide deck that was supplied to, uh, to the members of council. I think everybody's taken a good look at it. Coming from a municipality that has their own police services, uh, one of the things that, as you said, it's not a science, it certainly looks at it, but one of the factual things that in our municipality, when we're looking at it on the lower tier, is there any information or statistics on accidents? And we know that speeding certainly causes, uh, the increase of the severity of accidents and whatnot. But I'm looking maybe towards the transportation, uh, and/or yourself. Uh, Mr. McGowan, do you have any factual information on accidents within this area over the last 10-year period?
Press the button here. Okay. Thank you for the question. Um, we, we didn't include reference to any accidents, uh, on the road. Primarily because we wanted to ensure that we were as professional and balanced in our presentation as we possibly could be. And we were concerned that there is a, an element of subjectivity associated with accidents and quote unquote near misses. So we didn't, uh, include any specific information in that regard. I can advise county council that, uh, approximately four years ago, near the beginning of our endeavor to deal with this issue, there was an accident involving actually a county plow, which was, uh, which was a complete write-off. It had its, its, uh, the, the back of its frame was broken. It, it encountered as a result of high speed, uh, in, in, uh, poor traction conditions on the road. It was a winter time accident. It encountered a, a car that was, um, in the wrong lane. It was the car, the vehicle, the car was, excuse me, I think it was a van, was traveling west, uh, the plow needed to divert itself into the east, into the westbound lane and went into the ditch. The vehicle that was traveling west, uh, overturned because of the sharp drop off, off the shoulder that I mentioned. Uh, and that, that vehicle was a write-off. The occupants needed to be extracted by way of, uh, breaking the windshield. Uh, I myself have had, um, two incidents, uh, on the road. In both cases, I was on a tractor pulling agricultural, uh, equipment. But I've had two incidents that, uh, it's difficult to really present to you in an, in an objective fashion today because I, I survived in both cases. But certainly the fear of God was put into me as a result of both of them. Uh, my fellow residents and, um, ma- many people have their own stories of near misses, uh, on the road. The, the one accident that I've mentioned is the, is the one accident in, on the stretch of road that I'm aware of.
Any other questions for clarification on the presentation? Not seeing any, I will thank you very much, Mr. McGowan. Appreciate your time and your, uh, your professionalism very much. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Well done. Not everybody does this good with those microphones. Okay, uh, we have no closed meeting matters. We have no reports. We have bylaws. So, uh, we have three bylaws to consider. I'm going to take them individually this morning just because of the, uh, anticipated discussion. So the first bylaw, uh, this morning is to amend the, uh, the schedules GNONU of bylaw 4788-13, being a bylaw to regulate traffic and parking on highways within the Gray County road system. Councilor Nielsen, please.
Thank you very much, Warden Milne. Um, I do want to propose, uh, an amendment, uh, very similar to what, um, Councilor McQueen moved during the last committee of the whole. Um, so I will move that now and then I would like to speak to it once I've moved the amendment. Um, I'll move that, um, amendment being made to by law. Oh, I wrote it down, 517624?
Yeah, just, just, just a minute, Councilor Nielsen, I need the, I need the bylaw on the floor first, then I'll entertain your, your amendment.
Can I just move the bylaw with the amendment, right, with the change as one motion? So I'll do that. I'll move the bylaw as I will amend it.
Okay, so that, the clerk tells me is in order. So thank you very much. Is there a secondary for that bylaw as amended or as? All right, you go ahead. Sorry.
I was trying my best to be as professional as possible, Warden Milne. Just for clarity for everybody, the amendment that I'm trying to move is to by law 517624 and that the bylaw be amended to incorporate a reduction in to 60 kilometers per hour on Gray Road 31 from 20 meters west of fire number 469358 to 20 meters east of fire number 469570 in Gray Highlands, Rob Roy, in schedule N of rates of speed. That's what I'd like to move.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Is there a secondary for that? Councilor McQueen, thank you. Any discussion or deliberation? Perhaps would, would staff like to speak to the, uh, amendment first, or do you want to wait for questions? Trevor, where's Trevor? There's Trevor. If you want to speak to it, Trevor, first, please? Okay, we'll do it that way.
Morning, County Council. Uh, so in terms of the amendment, I'm not sure if we can pull up the presentation. Yes, so again, this is, uh, obviously the session that we're talking about here in Rob Roy today. Uh, and really just want to bring light to some of the, I guess, concerns that we have. More from our overall perspective of reductions of speed limit in places where they, um, not necessarily meeting any sort of engineering standard, more, um, other, uh, concerns and more of a safety perspective. So in Rob Roy here, uh, if we go to the next slide, I can kind of show this is what our vertical alignment is for the roadway, uh, within the valley. So as, uh, Peter had mentioned, there's, uh, two sags there, the predominant sag, uh, number one is where the river, uh, crosses there. And the second sag is just beside the, what we call the church crest, and that's where the United Church is. Uh, in this particular situation, the yellow line there represents the existing 60. Uh, the magenta lines, uh, represent the proposed 60, and I guess that cyan would be the, uh, 80 kilometer speed zone. Now, in this case, the crest, from a design perspective, the crest meets a 70 kilometer design speed, and this is primarily why, uh, the road has been dropped to a 60 in this stretch. Uh, the two sags, there's two different ways of looking at it from a design perspective. There's a vertical, uh, design standard where it looks at a sag where, uh, it's based on headlights and seeing sight distance with headlights, and then the other is more of a comfort rating. Uh, and the comfort rating is more for drivers, just so you don't feel like you're really being jolted at the bottom of the sag. Uh, both conditions are met for an 80 and a 90 kilometer speed, design speed with the sag, uh, for comfort. Uh, but when we look at the headlight one, sag two represents, or meets a 60 design speed, and then sag one is marginally underneath the 60 design speed. Now, one of the things with the headlight one, um, really what it's meant to be is if you're driving on the road, your headlights have a small angle upwards. So as you come into a sag, it's meant to see an object on the road. And typically, uh, the regulation says that you're supposed to see brake lights on the vehicle head. Now, usually at, in a nighttime environment, brake lights are pretty obvious on the vehicle head. So, uh, whether you have the headlights reaching the brake lights or not, you typically can see them. So it, the comfort one tends to be a driving factor for, uh, sags. So there is a little bit of a discrepancy that it doesn't meet the, uh, headlight one. Again, it's just marginally underneath the 60 and then as a comfort, which typically drives most of our sags, and that's predominantly because of the topography we have in the county. We, if we went and addressed every single sag with, uh, the headlight, uh, regulation, we would be finding speed limit drops in places all over the county. So, uh, predominantly the comfort one drives it, uh, in this case, as long as we're close on the headlight, we typically accept it. In this case, we're again marginally under the 60. So in terms of the magenta areas, uh, there's nothing in these areas that really, from a design perspective, has any complications. Again, the sight distances, um, on both sides exceed 300 meters and for a heavy vehicle traveling at 100 kilometers per hour in wet conditions, their stopping sight distance is 225 meters. So again, we well exceed, uh, the ability for a vehicle to stop, to a dead stop on the road, uh, with any sight distance. Again, weather conditions always impact this. Uh, again, drivers are supposed to react to weather conditions. So if it is raining and it's snowing, you should be driving at a speed that you feel is reasonably, reasonable to be safe. So again, if we regulate based on weather conditions, we're going to get into situations where again, we have much lower, uh, speed limits all throughout the county again. So the other thing to keep in mind is the majority of drivers do drive in a safe and reasonable manner. A lot of times we get in situations where we have outliers, um, that tend to drive at faster speeds, um, and whether that's respect for the road conditions, respect for other drivers, respect for the public. Sometimes it feels like that there's a lack of respect on those higher ends. Those drivers tend to, whether they're not aware of the conditions or not aware of the, you know, local municipality that they're driving in. Those tend to result in a lot of the, what we call the near misses and that, and that's because the disparity in those speeds is considerably large. So again, if we can go to the next slide there, Sarah. So this is, uh, a traffic count that was done by us. It's actually two kilometers west of Rob Roy. Uh, this is within an 80 kilometer speed limit. And basically what you can see here is the number each, or the height of the graph is how many vehicles are traveling within that five kilometer speed range. So this is what we call a standard distribution. Effectively, the average speed is in around 80 to 85. And what we find are 85th percentile, in this case, is around 95% or sorry, 95 kilometers per hour. So in this case, the 80 kilometer speed zone within that stretch of Gray Road 31 is working pretty standard to what we find within the county. If anything, it's marginally lower than some of the ones we have seen. Uh, and I, my understanding of why this is the case is Gray Road 31, as Peter brought up, does have narrow shoulders. It has drop off. It has imp- or environmental impacts that cause drivers to slow down. There's trees that are a little closer, uh, to the road. All of those things impacted drivers' perception and reactions to speed limits. So if you're driving, say, on Gray Road 10 at the, uh, west end of the county, we have large platform. We have big open ditches with a big wide open space where we see the speed, uh, the speeds on those roads to be even higher. And that's because drivers don't have that sense of restriction and, you know, uh, increased risk. So Gray Road 31, because of these situations that are, also have a bit like, um, safety concerns, they actually help to control the speed marginally as well. So if we go to the next slide. So here, what I've shown is the, uh, the green chart is the speed comparison for, uh, the traffic counts we conducted within the 60 kilometer zone that's existing. And you can just marginally see the blue there for, um, basis for comparison between a normal 80 kilometer speed zone. So what we can see from this graph is that the peak of the graph has actually shifted down closer towards the 60. Again, that's because certain drivers are obviously respecting the speed limits and drawing that average down. What you will notice on the far end of the graph where the speeds are in excess of, uh, basically 100 kilometers per hour, those are not changing. So even with a 60 kilometer speed limit, those people are don't, it's whether they don't care, they don't respect that speed limit. Either way, they're driving to what they perceive to be safe. And again, that is debatable, but obviously we have to deal with speeders. So, um, that's basically the group that we're concerned about. Uh, and obviously from the data we have here, that is not changing whether it's 60 or 80. So it makes it really difficult because you have to find ways to basically reduce speeds without just doing it through, uh, speed limits effectively. Uh, you have to find other ways, whether it's, um, different forms of traffic calming, road, pinching the road, doing things that restrict that feeling of driving, make it feel less safe for drivers. That's the most effective way to reduce speeds. So again, if it just goes to the next. So again, this, oh, back. Sorry, just. So I've kind of drawn the line to show that basically that kind of more normal, uh, normal distribution has shifted down. And again, predominantly that is from drivers that are respecting the speed limits, um, normally. So more of our general average driver. normally. So more of our general average driver. And yeah, I guess this point I can take some questions if there is any.
Are there any questions for Trevor's presentation? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and Trevor. When was that speed uh data collected?
Uh, through you, Warden. Uh, that the speed data was collected for the blue graph in twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'd have to pick the month, but I believe it's spring for Gray Road Thirty-One, so it'd be around May. Uh, and then the green was taken in twenty twenty-two. And I believe that was around April to June. I'm not sure the exact dates on that, but it was around the same timeframe.
As clarity, the blue was twenty twenty-three, the green was twenty twenty-two. So this presentation, or there was a presentation by the previous, just the speaker at the Greyhound and Space Services meeting last let's see, last April, maybe. And there was a presence of uh OPP presence. And that greatly reduced the speed. People got the wind, but there was patrolling on that. And I think there was one individual that that lost his car for thirty days. Unfortunately, but that's uh so enforcement is part of of that and and certainly the OPP have been following. So that would be slowing down greatly, but above a hundred quacks through that space because you're doing what fifty over sixty, you lose your vehicle. So or is it no fifty over sixty, which would be a hundred and ten. But anyway, an individual did lose their their like their vehicle for thirty days and and that came through enforcement, which probably reflected um the driving habits of individuals before that enforcement happened. Once that enforcement happened, the speed did drop because people knew there's being enforcement. So um yeah, it's I'll I'll have other points to raise, but just going back to the previous slide or the one where it has the uh uh vertical curves. Okay, so if you look at that vertical curve, the Pretty River Road, and that's coming from left to right, the Pretty River Road and the intersection there has, the counselor echoes, there was an accident there a few years back. Um nobody was was seriously injured, but there was an accident because if you come up that road from the Pretty River Road, there was a house in the corner there at one time. And there's a lot of history. There used to be even a gas station in front of that house, but that's probably back when they had the glass bottles up top. My point is, it's so close to the road. I took a picture of it the other day. You cannot see around that corner very far. Uh, the sight line coming out there. So you have to pick poke your nose out as far as you can to see past that corner because geographically that house was built probably at the time of the horse and the buggy, and it's so close to the road that it it's a sightline issue. There has been some clearing up, but there's limitations there. Now, the house burnt about ten years ago, but it's still on, you know, a proper triangle sight line is not there. So that's that's a problem because if and I think I think something needs to be recognized here that, and this is the same thing in Kimberly, is on a flat road, your speed probably stays fairly constant. But when you have the gravity chains of going downhill, you have a tendency to speed up. And the I and I think from uh Mr. Gowan's presentation is if both top of those hills, you have a tendency to have gravity to sort of keep your speed or speed up, but then all of a sudden, you're 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 faced with those sixty kilometer hour signs, which the flashing lights do do attract your attention. I it I would say that has had an effect as well because it draws you, it brings your attention. And I think the more uh traffic calming there are, it brings to the the awareness of the driving public that, oh, we're getting serious now. They got flashing lights. But saying that, that is one, one, one problem of that particular section of road. The other part where it says United Church. Now, I think in the presenter's package, there was a picture there. There was a funeral there last summer, and as you see the pit, the the cars, they were past the sixty and and heading up the the where it says SAG two, they were into the that section of the road. And both the church and that and so the church doesn't have a lot of parking. So basically, if there's an event, there are a funeral or a church service or whatever, they have to park on both sides of the road. It that does have the effect of calming, no doubt, you going through. But when somebody commits over top of that hill and gets closer to that, yes, they have to, you know, they see the flashing on sixty, they do have to immediately start to slow down. And when you see cars on the side road, you do. But, you know, so those are issues that have happened in the past of 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 events happening at that church, funerals and and church services. But even back to the intersection of the Rob Roy, there is a Rob Roy school that is um a museum. It has no parking. So again, you're forced to park either on the Pretty River Road or on the uh thirty-one itself. So it's not just a normal stretch of road. It's it's it has um activity on that road, plus it has vertically vertically uh alignment. Vertical the vertically along, it's it's not vertically aligned flat. It comes down as you see. So that, you know, adds to the the events that are happening on that road. Third part, as I mentioned two weeks ago, is we have two um large aggregate operators to the south of of thirty-one on on uh I guess south of thirty-one and and towards St. Hampton that do travel that road frequently. And I think part of the idea of putting that sixty at the top is sort of to give that indication, okay, start slowing down going through there. Because once you're committed with a, and I don't know the tonnage of a large tractor trailer and that waits, but you cannot just stop on a dime like a car. We all know that. So I think the part is, is you know, the eighteen extra seconds it's going to take, as the presenter said, it it makes sense to slow that traffic down at the top. Similar to the Kimberly Hill, as we know that there's many things, many, many issues around the vertical curve going down have a tendency to speed you up on the flat. We all know that it happens. It it you have weight behind you and has a tendency to do that as well. So I I wanted to bring those three points. And and again, thank you for, that gives it a a good a good explanation. And if you could just go back to the very first slide, please. Where it talked, it shows that you can GIS or the E I, yeah. So you can sort of see the lay of the land. It's it on to the north is in part of the Negro Scarpment, and it's part of the the retributary to the Pretty uh Pretty River itself. And you can see where, yes, I would agree, Trevor, that it does have a tendency to be traffic calming to a point because you have vegetation and it's narrow roads and stuff. But you can see again, there is, if you haven't driven the road, you can see it's it's not normal farm fields and and flat flat land. It it is, it is up, down, 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 and then starting to go up. And once you press that hill, it you're committed to whatever, and you do have time to slow down. But if there is the ability to make you aware, I think part of it is it talk about subjective is if you're making that top of those hills slower, it's telling that driver there's something going on ahead. Right? It's going to tell you that, you know, maybe you need to slow down here a little bit because it's not the the summer straight lay of the land. So yes, subjective, but I think, you know, from from the lay of the land and from what we're, you know, what's trying to be proposed here, I think it in my opinion, it it does make sense. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. I I do need to bring a procedural matter to council's attention. Because the motion the bylaw was moved as amended or with an amendment. If that motion is lost, we lose the original bylaw as well. So if if anybody is so inclined, you need to either separate the vote or amend. Well, yeah, that's a solution too. But uh if you're concerned about losing the entire bylaw, you need to amend what we're discussing here now. But if you're not concerned about losing it, then we can proceed. But anyway, any further discussion or questions for treasure, count Trevor, Counselor DeBreen, please.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Um, and thank you for the clarification because I wondered how that was all going to play out to the graph where the the line graph where it shows the SAG one and two. I'm not familiar with fire numbers on this stretch of road. Is it being proposed that for simplicity, that the reduction be at the top of the crest where the purple and blue meet there to the top of the crest on the other side? Because, I mean, you could have a I mean, you're going uphill, so it's it's going to take time for you to build your speed anyway. The but there's that's the proposal that it's at the top of the crest to the top of the crest. That's where the fire numbers are. Thank you. And I go back to the green bar graph. What I'm seeing is is that although it is, they are slower than the eighty kilometer, the blue, the speed limit is lower. But what what I see is that the people are actually traveling, if it's a sixty kilometer zone, they're actually traveling more frequently over the speed limit than if it was an eighty. And I just wanted to clarify if that is correct, if my understanding is correct. I the number of people traveling eighty-five and ninety and even more in a sixty. We obviously know we can't have enforcement there twenty-four seven unless we get, maybe we start thinking about automated speed enforcement. But thank you for clarifying the nods. Yes, it's the top of the crest to the top of the crest.
Thank you. Trevor, did you have comment?
Yeah, and to that, I will clarify, um if we do go to the green, uh the last uh page there. Uh, what we do see is that although the average speed marginally comes down, it really only comes down one kilometer an hour. Um, so and in reality, that one kilometer per hour, depending on the day you do it, can make that adjustment anyway. Um, so what we do find, there is a little more shift to um cars moving towards that sixty. But again, we still have the issue where uh and it could be partially because of the topography, cars going down the hill that might be keeping that average a little bit higher. Um, again, that's really getting down into looking at every particular case, uh which it's difficult. The one thing I will mention that um what we do see from the green graph compared to the blue, uh, and this is why a lot of times when we do reduce speed limits and effectively, if the eighty-fifth percentile of the speed generally doesn't change. And then again, in this kid situation, the eighty-fifth percentile for both situations with ninety-five kilometers per hour, uh, which is pretty standard for an eighty kilometer road. So again, drivers are still recognizing this as an eighty kilometer stretch, whether it's posted at sixty or not. Um, again, if we go to the green, one way to look at this, the blue um kind of use it as an accordion, basically. So the green, what the green graph, we see that that kind of bulk group has a bigger distribution area. And what that really means is that if a car is driving on the low end of that versus the high end of that, what you're going to have is that faster moving car is going to be coming up on a slower moving car. So your risk and um the safety concerns with that are increased. Whereas with the kind of blue normal distribution, that's a little more tight. So if you kind of think of it as a brake pedal, if you have a bigger distribution, you have to push the brake pedal harder to close that accordion. Whereas if you have a blue tighter one, it's a lot less to make that adjustment. So there is that increased risk when you do try to drop a speed limit when it's not actually being recognized by drivers, which is a large reason why we typically go to an eighty-five percentile for speed. What's that? There it's uh um warranted, but it basically not because if drivers are recognizing that that's what they feel safe at, we we're not going to draw them down unless we do some major um capital work to traffic comp.
Thank you. And to that point, if it was a lower speed and they're still doing ninety-five, the pinch in the pocketbook is probably going to get the message across a lot quicker than um any other type of enforcement or traffic calming measure. Um, the word will get out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Apples.
Uh, thank you. Procedurally, um, in passing the committee of the whole and the council minutes prior to this bylaw coming forward, that is where, I guess this is towards Madam Clerk, that's where the actions were taken to be put into this bylaw? From the February eighth meeting, Committee of the Whole to get have this prepared?
The effect of the resolution that was passed at the February eighth meeting was to bring forward a bylaw with the changes that were recommended in the staff report. So it didn't include the the um uh the change on Gray Road Thirty-One. So that action was taken with the publishing of the council agenda. So in in a sense, the the effect was to bring forward the bylaw with the recommendations in the staff report at the time.
So just clarification on that portion, then. At the committee of the whole meeting on February the eighth, there was a uh motion put forward that this be extended. And at that point in time, that motion was defeated. Am I correct in saying that? The motion was brought forward on February eighth to include an extended sixty kilometer zone here in Rob Roy. That was defeated. And it is in the approved minutes approved today. Correct? So I'm think in my mind procedurally, we have a motion to not go forward with this extension of the sixty kilometer zone. It's already been moved, was defeated. We're having an amendment to bring it back. Or to reconsider that motion, that exact motion in today's bylaw. So in my mind, the amendment that was proposed by Counselor Nielsen is out of order. It should have been, if it is going to be, would be a reconsideration of that motion that has already been approved in the minutes from the Committee of the Whole February the eighth. That's my, on my interpretation of the procedures. Would I be right in that?
I'm going to ask for a recess for five minutes for the clerk to confer and uh we'll we'll come back with a a decision on your uh question. Okay, so we'll recess till, what is it, uh, quarter to two? We'll come back at five to eleven. One minute warning. All right. Thank you very much for everyone's indulgence. Um, Madam Clerk, would you, uh, please, uh, explain, uh, again, the interpretation, uh, your interpretation of how this may unfold?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just to confirm, um, from staff's perspective, the resolution that was passed at the February meeting was direction to bring forward a bylaw that incorporated the recommendations in the staff report from transportation services. So that action has been taken, the bylaw has brought forward, but no decision was actually made on any speed limits. It was only a decision, um, on whether to include or not include a speed limit reduction in, in Rob Roy. So the, other than that decision, no other decisions were made. It's the bylaw that changes the speed limit. So it's not reconsideration from staff's perspective in this situation, given that the bylaw is the tool that actually changes the speed limit and it's, um, open to be amended at this stage. After today, however, it is reconsideration.
Okay. Counselor Apples.
Um, very well. Uh, I'll, uh, concede to the professionalism of our clerk and appreciate that interpretation. But I will request that the, uh, motion by Counselor Nielsen be split, that the amendment be voted on separately. Again.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a secondary for that? Counselor Greg, thank you. Any discussion on the motion to separate the vote? All those in favor? That is carried. Okay. So we're going to deal with the amendment first. Counselor Nielsen, I'll ask you, sorry. Okay, we're good. Counselor Nielsen, speak to the amendment, please.
Thank you, Ward Mill. I, I think it's appropriate to explain why I changed my mind. So at the committee of the whole, I was against the change to the speed. Um, given a lot of the reasons that, um, are, oh, I'm sorry, Trevor, I don't know your title. So Trevor spoke to, um, what, so what changed my mind? When I went out there and took a look and, and the staff can please put up this SAG graph again, if that's possible, uh, from Trevor's report this morning. When I went there and took a solid look at, um, what's happening and respectfully, I don't drive this section of Gray County very often. Um, but I had a request, uh, to go out there and take a look and, and tour with some of the residents. When we're looking at SAG one and SAG two, my perspective of, as a driver coming into the intersection and what had me, uh, changed my mind and perception is that we are asking drivers to slow their rate of speed and compress, as Trevor has spoken to, the di- the difference between the, the fastest drivers and the slowest drivers after they have started the down, down, or the decline of the hill. While they're staring at the incline up, up in front of them. So at the Pretty River Parkway Road there is where the sixty kilometer delineation changes between, uh, traveling, uh, east on Gray Road thirty-one. You are already significantly down the hill. You see a red flashing light telling you to change to sixty to slow down your speed while you're staring at the inclining hill in front of you. The logic in that request to drivers to slow down at that moment does not make sense. There, the instinct of any driver is going to be to ignore that speed change because there's the inclination coming up ahead of them. And you're already traveling at a rate of speed faster than the sixty and you're on the declining slope. By moving the sixty kilometers per hour, hour back, you're having an opportunity for drivers to slow down before entering this stretch where we have multiple sags, multiple dips. And in, admittedly, my perception as a driver through that section, a greater chance to slow down and have the traffic be that accordion that Trevor spoke to. We are going to have a less of a, of a separation between the fastest drivers and the slowest drivers because you're not asking them to change and, and go against every instinct to where we have the sixty kilometer change. This is why, uh, from my perception of, of touring this space, I have brought forward the amendment, uh, that we have already discussed and why my mind was changed. Um, and so that's what I wanted to bring forward this morning. Thank you very much, Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Pringle.
Thank you, Warden. It's Counselor. So I'm going to put a bit of a different spin on the scenario in front of us. I'm not opposed to the sixty kilometer an hour aspect being brought into play here, but a guy that's involved in the trucking industry for the last thirty years, I see two instances where things are going to change. Um, what we're going to ask a guy now pulling, you know, thirty ton on a tractor trailer to come into there to drop his speed down to sixty, you're going to have Jake break noise. You're going to have Jake brakes coming on both ends, coming at you all day long. That'll be the next thing. It'll be a noise issue. The problem, you get to the bottom of SAG one and you're doing sixty, I'll guarantee you, he's doing forty. Getting over either one of those hills going the other way. Now we have aggressive drivers coming back at behind you, passing you on a double line going up a hill. That's going to be your next problem. So as, as much as I agree with the sixty kilometer an hour, there's a scenario there that it's basically in my mind, it's an OPP issue that we don't have that reduction in speed when it needs to be there. I think we're going to open up a, an avenue of having a couple of other issues with tractor trailers going down those hills moving forward. So just a cut, a point of view on my side of it, when a truck, I got trucks there right now. Our trucks are not overpowered. If they're doing sixty to the bottom, guaranteed forty at the top. So that eighteen seconds, seconds is a passenger vehicle, that ain't a tractor trailer or a truck. So just a couple of points from my perspective.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor, uh, Greg.
Thank you, Warden, and I'm, I'm going to speak against the amendment. Uh, spoke last meeting about this. Um, boy, you could apply the same rationale for the fifteen kilometers on Gray Road forty east of Highway ten. Topography is all very similar. Uh, you could make the same argument on shoulder widths on the road. And why not move it all to sixty kilometers an hour? We have to base our decision here on, on some guidance. Uh, we've got information from engineering services. Counselor Pringle spoke very well on, on different, uh, items that arise uh, from the decision-making process and certainly in the correspondence that came forward, I've got highlighted here in liability concerns. Uh, have those been answered? Yeah, they've been answered by staff in the last report for me. So at the end of the day, it's not conjecture, it's not anecdotal storytelling that you, you have to lean back on to formulate your decisions. If you ever end up in a court of law trying to defend your decision, you better have a decision-making process that you can lean back on. The decision-making process is the end, is the information that we've had come forward in the reports from engineering services. Otherwise, anecdotally, we all, we'll apply the same rationale all, all over the county, all over our county roads, all over the municipal roads. Um, and that's what you have to stay away from. So, uh, those are my comments. I'll vote against it. I understand the, the concerns at the lower level. Uh, but I am somewhat troubled. This is the second time we've had a, uh, traffic concern come forward in the last year. And it, there's been, um, support by the lower tier for changes. And we here are operating at the county level. We have to represent the county with that hat on. So I'm a little troubled. Uh, this, the second time now that we've had that lower tier, um, angle being placed into the decision-making process. So I, I understand that we're looking to stand up for our residents. Uh, but we certainly have a responsibility here at the county to represent on behalf of the county uh, and make decisions on behalf of the county. So, uh, those are my comments. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor McQueen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, Tara, I sent you a picture. Are you able to pull it up? Through an email. Well, I'll continue on if you are, because it talks about that intersection. And I hear what Counselor Greg is saying, but there's some issues on that road that don't meet the standard. And, and that one intersection I was talking about, there's no sight line triangle there. You cannot see around that corner. And if it's able to come up there, you'll see because the sixty kilometer sign and the flashing light is on the, in my mind, it's on the wrong side of that intersection because you're already either speeding through that intersection, you can't see coming out. Uh, now, from those two, from that particular, well, the one aggregate operator, which is south of Gray Road thirty-one, this is not the haul road. The haul road south. I mean, if you're, if you have a, you know, you have the choice of going other, other routes. And Gray Road four is, is a, is a, is a major road that if you have an issue with this and becomes an issue, you can go other routes. You can go Gray Road four to Gray Road two if that's, if that becomes an issue with your hauling and that, and this is not the haul road for those aggregate. The haul road is, uh, that was determined way back when that license was, was, was determined. So, yes, um, we have, we talk about vision zero. We talk about, about that many years ago, there was, um, forty kilometers decided or, or determined. Now they're getting to thirty kilometers because of residential area. Okay. If you see this intersection, this is coming up the Pretty River Road, coming out to Gray Road thirty-one. See the sight line there? That's where that place where I said there was a house and it was burnt, but it's still there and that's private property. And I, you know, obviously unless you, 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 uh, take that property into the, uh, I guess you could expropriate or whatever, make a, a sight triangle there. But you cannot see around that corner and see where the flashing light and the other sign which says eighty going, which we're going, that's looking east, but coming west. It's, it's, it's the eighty kilometer hour sign just under the green sign and across from that is the sixty kilometers going down the hill. You're past the intersection, but you can't see out the intersection. That does not make sense. You have people come over that hill committed and then they're, they're laying on the brakes, which or whatever it's to meet that. I will certainly say the sixty flashing lights has made a big difference. It's, it brought awareness, it's calming. But all that's being asked is put that on top of the two hills, bring it. I think we would all agree sixty is eighty, eighty is a hundred kilometer. People will drive that because they know you can drive twenty kilometers over the speed limit without getting anything. That's just the rule of the thumb, OPP, but I'm not going to say anymore. We all know that. So still, we will know that people will still drive fast, but you know, that's just one example of coming out of that intersection. And that was the one intersection. I know a few years ago, there was, there was a bad accident because they couldn't see out that intersection. And you can see why. So it's not like we're dreaming this up. It's, and you talk about vision zero and all this other stuff. I know, I, 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 I totally understand the part with, with the truck side of it. I get it. It's, it's, you've got weight. Weight pushes you down the hill, pushes you up the hill. But there are options here that you can take other, other avenues. And also on that road, there's different, different, uh, traffic patterns. Friday afternoon is a different traffic pattern than it is during the week. Sunday afternoon is a different traffic pattern. And if all of a sudden there's a big job in Thornbury or whatever, then the trucks are hauling. It just, it's part of business. It's part of what happens. But you can see as an example, and I'm sure I'm not going to speak for, for Counselor Nielsen, but you, you take the drive, you'll see what, what it's all about. You'll, you'll, and that's per, uh, one example of, of the sight lines you cannot see. So, you know, Counselor Greg, I understand, but there's got to be other things that need to be addressed if we're going to keep that speed because you cannot see around that corner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think we pretty well beat this one to death. Counselor Nielsen, I'll give you the final word if you wish. You're good. Okay. I'm going to call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. That motion fails. Okay, recorded vote has been called. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Mackey?
Counselor Mackey. Counselor Mackey is opposed. Counselor McKay is absent. Counselor Carlton. Counselor Carlton is opposed. Counselor Pringle. Counselor Pringle is opposed. Counselor McQueen. Counselor McQueen in favor. Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Nielsen is in favor. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson in favor. Counselor Dickert. Counselor Dickert is opposed. Counselor Kentner. Counselor Kentner in favor. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Keveney is opposed. Counselor Body. Counselor Body opposed. Counselor Greg. Counselor Greg is opposed. Warden Milne.
Opposed.
Warden Milne opposed. Counselor Dobreen. Counselor Dobreen opposed. Counselor Matrasovs. Counselor Matrasovs is in favor. Counselor Boardingell.
Opposed.
Counselor Boardingell is opposed. Counselor Echols. Counselor Echols is opposed. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Hutchinson is opposed. That is lost sixty-five to twenty-eight.
Counselor McQueen.
Like to make an amendment that the proposal that showed sixty kilometers at the top of the two crests. Be reduced to seventy. So I know there's areas where you have a reduction of speed. Coming up to a further reduction of speed. So I'm moving an amendment that the. Uh, two locations be reduced to a seventy kilometer hour kilometer hour sign. The sixty kilometer hour signs would would stay in place. And we've done this on the Kimberly Hill. We've done this other areas. It's about a bit of a, a bit of a slowing you down before you get to the the lower speed. And I know that is that is in the manual. That is something that the county does do. It's it's an adjusting your speed before you get to it's. You just understand eighty to sixty. I understand that. So my proposal is is the that the same wording as the deputy mayor put through. But it would be seventy kilometer hour sign uh, sign or 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 speed sign at those two points. That's my amendment.
So to be clear, so that we all understand, is your amendment actually asking the speed to be changed from eighty to seventy or just signs saying that? Okay, all right. Yep, yep, okay. I just wanted to be clear what you were asking, and I think I am. Is there a second for that amendment? Counselor Nielsen. Yeah, we probably do. The clerk just asked me, do we want staff's perspective? And I said, yes, yes, we probably do. So Trevor, what uh, do you have any comments on that, please?
Uh, yes, three, Warden. Uh, so typically, uh, the M T O does spec specify that a transition zone would occur anywhere between. Any speed change of twenty kilometers or greater. So unfortunately, this is not one of those situations. Um, that being said. I could see the merit between like lowering to a seventy to try to create that transition down. Uh, so there is merit to it. Again, it is not um. Based on any or engineering or design standards, it would be regulated, but again, it the merit of trying to get that um. Slowing down the vehicles to start a little earlier. There is a potential that that might help. Uh, again, I I'm not certain. It will help on the higher end of this, people traveling in the higher ranges of speed, which is really the major concern here. Uh, but again. It may help. It's anecdotally, it could help, but again, I, the evidence already supports that it probably won't, but.
Thank you, Trevor. And I'm gonna ask if unless there's some questions about. The technicality of doing that, we've already had the debate about changing the speed. So I'm not sure we need to go through all that again. Unless there's a, Trevor, go ahead.
One thing I would mention too, because that is an existing sixty zone in the middle, I'm not sure if the amendment. Amendment would effectively be saying the whole thing is seventy. Uh, so we'd have to have two separate seventy zones. Uh, which would one ending on the west side, one on the east side. So it would be just a change to the wording of how that's written.
Yeah, I think it's understood what the what the request is. Counselor McQueen.
Yeah, I'm I have no problem with the wording changing that it would be uh, seventy at that whatever that nine one one sign on the east side to to the sixty. Uh, on the east side and then however that wording would be, that's that's the intent. But I I would like to speak one more to it if I could. Yep. So a an example of this is where we reduce the speeds going into Kimberly, uh, I think it was a year or so ago. And then staff came back, said, well, the transition to go from eighty to sixty. And they came back with a recommendation that you need to do that transition to get people starting to slow down before you get to that forty. So part of that, and I think Trevor's heard that, that's what Trevor's saying, it makes more sense to start to slow people down before you get to the initial because. Going from eighty to sixty. Well, that that was sort of the argument with at forty that, you know, you needed that transition. So that's that's part of my rationale is. At least we talk about traffic calming and stuff, that's starting that traffic calming that's bringing people aware. You're coming over that hill, oh, seventy, oh. It's making people aware and that is the key thing here is making the driving public aware. And we're serious about traffic calming that and I feel that's one part of what we're trying to do here. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Counselor Pringle.
Thank you, Warden. There just a question for Trevor there. Is it posted on top of the hills if there's a sixty kilometer zone coming up? Is it? Like, do we need to say it? Do we need to go to seventy or do we need to have signs saying sixty sec or concession or whatever below?
Yeah, three, Warden. Uh, there is advanced sixty signs, um, but basically they're at the spacing prescribed by the M T O. Uh, warrants for those. So, uh, in this case, the on sag two there, the advanced warning um. Is a more or less kind of just before you get into the sag. Uh, and then the advanced warning on the other side would be. Um, can't remember the exact number off the top of my head for that distance, but it's around hundred, two hundred meters away from the speed zone change.
So having said that, is it a possibility to put signs on top of the hills saying that there's a sixty zone at the bottom? Is that out of the realm of what the M T O would want?
Yeah, three, Warden, again, I would say it would be out of that realm. Now, what we could potentially do is have um, like steep hill, like the truck signs and steep hill signs. Put on the top of that. Typically, those are for hills of eight percent or greater. And in this situation, we have a seven percent on one side and five and a half on the other. Um, so it, again, doesn't really meet that warrant for those signs either, but it is again, a way to kind of give some advance warning. Um, and that is typical. If people see one of those signs, they may make that speed adjustment at the top of the hill.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. I'm gonna call the vote on the amendment as it's proposed. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. That fails. Okay, now we're back to the original bylaw. As it was presented in the agenda. Any discussion on that? Call the question, Counselor Echols.
This is a traffic calming bylaw and. The biggest problem or the biggest issue that we have with any of the bylaws, no matter whether we're. At uh, our lower tier or here at the county or even the province. Is the enforcement. Um, if we want to have safety and have individuals. Adhering to speed and whatnot, it is behooved that we do the enforcement. To make people be safe and probably have better education, driver education programs out there at this point in time as well too. And I think Trevor spoke to it. It's especially in Gray County. Uh, last week was one of those points. Drive to the road conditions. And that's not necessarily just under snow or freezing rain. It is under what the road is. And if it's hilly and curvy. You know, there's some big resistance there. Drive to what it is, but enforcement is the only way that it's going to be adhered to. Thank you.
I have full confidence that the new Community Safety Police Services Board, when it comes into existence on April first, will deal with these issues. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Milne. Just a comment to uh, Counselor Echols. Um. Gray as Gray Highlands, we have had conversations with the O P P. We've had recent conversations again with the O P P to do increased enforcement in this area. But I what I would say is that at Gray Hand's table, we've moved motions to recommend that the province change the speed fine. Uh, system that exists. Um, the speed fines that uh, from your introductory level of fines hasn't changed since the nineteen nineties. I recommend that all members of this council, uh, yeah, of this council do it at the lower tier. Make recommendations to the province. Hundred kilometer hour fine, a twenty kilo, a hundred dollar fine, twenty kilometers over. Is the price of a tank of gas. It is not a deterrent. That needs to change. Driver be driver behavior needs to change. And hopefully we can get some support and get the province to make some changes there.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the on the bylaw as it is presented in the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Trevor. Okay. Moving on to the second bylaw now. Uh, to, uh, while you see it there, to authorize the warden and clerk to execute execute a contribution agreement. Someone care to move that, please. Counselor Body and Counselor Echols. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you so much. And the fir final is the confirming bylaw. Someone move that. Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Oh, wait, sorry, Counselor Body has a question. Sir?
Sorry, just just as it's broken down, looking at this, I really don't know what that one means anymore. What what are we confirming? All actions proceedings in the past and the future. It is so vague. I'm I'm throwing Tara under the bus here and I didn't didn't warn her, but I think it's something that we should look at. We can move it today, but if it's adopting. What we're gonna do in committee the whole, then we can't really pass the bylaw before we do it. So I'm really not sure what that one really is.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the clerk to speak to it, but generally I always think it confirming that Owen Sound's gonna pay all of our all of our lunch bill. That gets usually what it is.
She's found it. Um, this was a change this year because we used to do one confirmatory bylaw at the end of the year. And now we've changed it and I think it's more similar to what you are all doing at your local meetings, which is to confirm. The proceedings of of the council at the end of that council meeting, but I'll let Tara. Thank you. Yes, uh, further to C A when C A Wind Group has said, um, the dates on it reflect the the. Um, they're not confirming any proceedings and actions taken today. It's confirming the actions. And proceedings from the February eighth meeting that weren't covered by a bylaw. So generally, the decisions are of council are made by bylaw. But as you know, that's cumbersome and we often do resolutions. So the purpose of this confirmatory bylaw is really to ratify. All those resolutions that haven't had a bylaw in the form of a catch-all bylaw. And as Kim had noted, we usually do that once a year, but now. We do it every meeting because otherwise it's kind of defeats the purpose because there's a gap in between. Um, for a whole year, some of those resolutions not having a a bylaw attached to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, confirming bylaw, that is carried. Thank you very much. News and celebrations. Counselor Nielsen. And I, well, I won't say.
Just a reminder for everybody that the coldest night of the year is happening this Saturday. There's events taking place across Gray County, including uh, the village of Markdale. Um, I would just uh, make it that known.
Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you. Through you, the Warden, I just wanted to share that we have International Women's Day in the town of the mountains. We have a. A tradition to work. The town works with the Blue Mountains Chamber of Commerce in order to bring a variety of topics. This year, we are doing Monday, March fourth from five to seven thirty P M. Tickets can be purchased at bluemountainchamber.ca. Um, half of the proceeds are going to be supporting My Friend's House Woman Shelter. And in the theme of the of the event is inspire inclusion. And not only will there be there be a panel discussion, but there'll be breakout sessions. There's also a night market of of local vendors and appetizers and a cash bar as well. So we hope that that if that doesn't conflict with another event that's happening in your own municipality, you might consider joining us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to acknowledge that Meaford is also supporting the coldest night of the year and that will be uh. A function of Rotary to support Rotary House. So we would appreciate anyone who is able to participate in that further two kilometer or five kilometer walk. Um, also, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Savannah and her team for. Uh, the new display at Gray Roots, which is in honor of our Meaford Sesma Centennial. There are information boards there, some souvenirs, memorabilia. Uh, maps and other information to raise awareness for our hundred and fiftieth upcoming this year. So thank you, Savannah.
Thank you, Shirley. Anyone else? Uh, Counselor Body.
Thank you, uh, Warden Milne. Uh, right now, the uh, International Auto Show is on in Toronto. Cabo Beach Concord Elegant sets up a site there. I'll be going down for two days. Actually, my son's coming again this year. Uh, where we promote the entire region uh, to try and attract people, not just the car show to golf, but to uh, come to the entire region. So. It's uh, I don't know how many millions of people go through that uh, display and get to see uh. Something of a big map of Gray County and uh, and where we are. Following that, come back Monday. We've got a council meeting and then Tuesday I'm off to the um. C N A, Canadian Nuclear Association's uh, annual conference in Ottawa promoting uh. And discussing uh, isotopes and everything that's going on in the area. So that's a couple of things that are coming up. Thanks.
Thank you, Ian. Now, I'm really excited to ask Savannah to describe uh, our our. Good news from the Edco Conference, so uh. Come on up, Savannah.
Thank you very much, Warden. It was a very exciting week. Two weeks ago, right after council, we headed to Toronto to the Edco uh, President's Dinner. Where we received an award of excellence for our master plan. So Economic Development, Tourism and Culture has been recognized as best in province for the master plan work. And we were very fortunate to share that with many of the staff from your municipalities because we really do owe this award to. All of your staff and all of our teams and all of the communities and everyone who came together to develop something that really is. Putting us on a path forward that we can all see ourselves in, we can all get excited about, and we're all raring to go. And implement something wonderful. So it was really, really amazing to be recognized on that stage. And an interesting tidbit, because our population is over a hundred thousand, we compete in the urban category. So we are there alongside the Torontos, the Mississaugas of the world, and that is who we compete against. So it is very, um, I think honoring and inspiring uh, to be named that for the planning and strategies category. So we wanted to bring that good news back to you. And congratulate you all, uh, because this is something that we all share together. And then I have a second one, but if you wanted to add anything, um, Counselor Milne, no? Okay, perfect. So then last week, we hosted one of the key elements of the master plan, which was bringing back the regional job there. So I do have Jacinda Rudolph with me. Because she really was the lead in charge of this event. And I wanted her to share some of the good news because it was a massive event and something that we're very, very proud of. So. Jacinda.
Good morning, County Council. And it really was a team effort. And with the with our partners and our member municipalities, it couldn't have happened without everyone's support. Um, so we did decide to do one large regional job fair. Uh, rather than last year where we did four smaller ones. And that was really around pooling our resources. Uh, collaborating together and also increasing our marketing to outside of our region. Um, we also were able to partner with uh, G T R and who's in the room here. And uh, to be able to reduce any uh, barriers in job seekers that live outside of Owen Sound to be able to attend the job fair. It was one of our most successful job fairs since the pandemic. Uh, we had about uh, just. At least seven hundred and fifty job seekers attend the job fair. And we hosted over a hundred employers. Um, from across all different sectors uh, that day. Um, some of the feedback we heard from our employers uh, was really great news. Like it it went really well. It was a great feeling, actually. And the employers said that there was a range, uh, a great uh, range of skills and candidates that came to their tables. And they also were able to promote their business to uh, job seekers that may not have known what their business is or whether whether it even existed. Um, I mean, it was on the arena floor, as you can see. So it was quite cold, but I have to say there were some really. Really warm connections that were made. Um, and more specifically, there were at least five hundred potential matches. Uh, that we were able to um, monitor. So I did put a little heart on your desk. I'm not, I, anyway, part of the heart was really, yes, I am interested, yes. Um, and really what we did is we gave each employer. Um, and really what we did is we gave each employer twenty of those hearts. And those hearts were to be given to job seekers that they, um, thought would be a potential match. So whether they were going to follow up or interview or, um, you know, really just have more conversations with them. And, um, then those job seekers put it into, uh, there was a ballot for a draw for a grand prize um, to win something. And so whenever we did the draws, actually, it was a, a Hanover resident that went to one of their, um, Electrical Contracts Limited. They went to one of their local, uh, businesses. And it was only, the only heart they, they received from one of the employers, and that was the one that won the grand draw. And so we collected all those ballots and there were at least five hundred and six that were, uh, monitored. So we, we understand kind of the value of a job fair because we've been doing it for quite a few years. And we really, it's really hard to follow up. So that was a big kind of, you know, uh, I guess also a feel-good, but also understanding the connections that are made. And then we also did, um, because we promoted outside the region, uh, we also invited, so in partnership with the Gray Roots Local Immigration Partnership and the Newcomer Center Appeal, we invited, uh, bus participants, uh, people to come and join a bus tour and see our region and also be able to see all the employment opportunities that are available. So we had thirty-three participants from the GTA come, um, they stopped at Blue Mountain Resort to kind of see the region and, and, and the area and, you know, some nice, uh, tourist activities that we have. And then, uh, they participated in a networking luncheon. And, uh, you know, we had the Warden come and welcome them with his brilliant smile. So who wouldn't want to relocate here, really? Um, so that, so we're following up with them. Uh, the participants in our partnership, uh, with, uh, Newcomer Center Appeal. And then lastly, we are going to be hosting a post-job fair event. So that will be, uh, in March. And we're inviting all the employers to really discuss kind of some of the outcomes of the job fair, but also more specifically, some of the workforce challenges. So that we can implement kind of strategies that do address the individual needs of the, of the companies that live, that are located in our region. But also, um, uh, uh, implement strategies that, that promote all, um, that, you know what I'm trying to say? Anyway, so I just wanted to say thank you to our member municipalities because it, it really was, uh, a collaborative effort. It was a team effort. And it couldn't have been done, the regional job fair couldn't have been done without everyone's support. So thank you.
Thank you, Jacinda. And I, and I, I heard, I heard that Jacinda, Jacinda was a little stressed that day. But I tell you, she didn't look at one iota. She was very, uh, determined and very focused, but she was having a great time. And, uh, in regards to Savannah's, uh, description of the EDCO event, if, if a- anyone gets a chance to sit in a large room with a lot of economic development people that have had a beverage or two, it is, it is very exciting. The, the energy is really strong in a room like that. Okay, uh, thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything for celebrations? Good news. Okay, not seeing any. I have one final motion to adjourn this portion of our meeting today. Councillor Matrasovs, Councillor Keveney, all those in favor, that is carried. Just give Rob a minute to flip everything over to our council meeting.